Council, come to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic of America, with all due respect, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all. Mandy, would you please call roll?
Me, I'm here. Brainerhorst, here. Butler?
Here.
Carlstone?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Dan Stryland?
Here.
All right, before we get into our agenda for tonight, as most of you know, I like to point out reasons for celebration in our community, we typically have a lot of reasons to, and a lot of things to celebrate, so obviously we, it's hard to imagine, it was two weeks ago, Tulip Times here, so that was a great time, but I don't know if you paid attention, but over the weekend, the state track meet took place, and Pella, kids from Pella, had ten state championships, which is pretty amazing, so I want to make sure and recognize that. Pella Christian girls were phenomenal, so they had six state championships. They won the sprint medley, if you're a track person, you know what a sprint medley is, I'm not going to go into all the details, but the hundred meter dash was run by, won by Rachel Kackleransky. The two hundred meter dash was won by Meredith and Light. The girls team won the four by four relay, they won the four by two relay, and at the time when they ran it, they had the second fastest all-time girls four by two. I think maybe Waki beat them, or got better in the finals, but, and then Bailey Boss won the four hundred meter dash. For Pella High, Marissa Farabee won the fifteen hundred and the three thousand, that's pretty impressive. Hanson King from Pella High won the shot, and Trevor Beestra for PC boys, for Pella Christian boys, won the shot. So those are just ten state championships, and there's a whole lot of other place winners, you know, places that they won, so that is pretty impressive for a community like ours, a state tournament, so I just want to make sure and recognize those. You know, a few weeks ago, we recognized our unbelievable jazz bands, so we have a lot of young people in this community doing a lot of great things, and it should be inspiring for all of us old people, what our young, what our young people are doing these days, so I'm excited about that. And then one other thing, I had the opportunity to, Representative Miller Meeks was in town on Friday, and I had the opportunity to go to meet her, so I could thank her, because we got word, I don't know, ten days ago or so, this goes back to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget year, and we had, we had applied for a HUD grant, an economic development initiative, a community project grant, for a million dollars. We had talked to her about our, the extension of University Street, and we were awarded that grant, and so we're, we have a million dollars of federal money for that project awaiting us when we get around to doing it, so I think that's a, that's a good reason to celebrate too, so. Just a few things I wanted to mention before we get started tonight about exciting things happening in our community, and just to remind her of what a blessed community we live in, and we should all never take that for granted, or forgive me, so. Thanks for indulging me, I thought it's kind, most of the time, I can remember all this stuff, but there was so much, I had to write it down this time, so, that's good.
Mayor Douglas, and, and Pella Boys finished first overall, too, at the state track meet, didn't they?
No, they didn't.
Oh, the girls finished second.
Yeah, Pella Christian girls finished second, by three points, yeah, yeah, so yeah, it was quite a, there was a lot of Pella in the, on Saturday, and a lot of.
A lot of good pictures in the register.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll move on to our, so can I get a motion for approval of our tentative agenda?
Still moved.
Brandon Horst De Young, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yeah.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Motion passed. So I'm going to ask Officer Calvin Willner to come and join me up front here. Another exciting thing is we're going to swear in a new police officer here, and so we're excited about that. Sometimes it's not easy to find them, and so we're always grateful when we have someone that has the talent and wants to do that, and so, the oath of office is up there, I'll just go ahead and let you read off of that, and I have a certificate that I signed for you to keep, so, go ahead. Raise your red hand.
Sir, I Calvin Willner do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the Office of Police Officer in the City of Pella, County of Marion, State of Iowa, as now and hereafter acquired by law.
Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome. Want to take some pictures? You want this up, or?
I don't care. Thank you.
That's one officer to another. Congratulations, welcome. All right, moving on, I'd like to reappoint Matt Gelder to serve a second term on the Library Board of Trustees. Matt and his family lived in Pella for approximately ten years as an active community member. Matt has previously been involved in Pella Kiwanis Club and served as a member of the Tulip Time Committee. Matt has attended thirty-one of the thirty-five meetings held since joining the board in 2021. If approved, Matt's second term will begin on July first, 2024, expire June 30, 2027. Can I have a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Brandon Horst De Young, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to appoint Amy Meyer to serve on the Library Board of Trustees. Amy and her family have lived in Pella for approximately twelve years. She was raised in Pella as a mother of young children and a nonprofit leader. Amy is currently active with the Pella Kiwanis Club and has worked with the Friends of the Public Library, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Mahaska County Homeless Coalition, Coalition and the United Way of Iowa. Amy has strong connections to the community and has a lot of experience bringing stakeholders together to find solutions. If approved, Amy's term would begin on July one, 2024, expire June 30, 2027. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Support.
I need a mo, you make a motion for approval, okay. So Butler? De Young? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Butler?
No.
De Young?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Can I get clarification on why you voted no?
Well, I think that in reviewing the application, I had some concerns, and I think that when we put people on a board that receive money from the city, it's different than any other board.
I think we should add a little more vetting out of those people than just hearing about
what they've done, and it'd be good to look at their application. I think we should, I think we should look at all the applications for a board where the money from the city goes to the public library, and we have no control over it from that point forward.
Where, where are we at here? We waiting for Lynn's vote?
Yeah, we are waiting for my vote. Is, is there a way that we can review this application?
Yeah, you had all the time and work to do it before.
It wasn't in our packet.
No, the application wasn't what the name was, the Library Board controls the application, so you could go, because I did, I went and read through all the applications. There were, there were ten applicants for this, this position, and I went and read all ten of them. I went and had a personal face-to-face conversation with Amy. She came recommended by the board, and I think maybe John went and read the applications, and so everybody had an opportunity to do that if he so chose to.
I don't think it'd be a bad idea, when we have appointments like this, to see those applications. For example, you know, like Matt McGelker, we have the information that he attended thirty-one of the thirty-five meetings, and we know he's been on that board for a while, we know very little about this applicant. I think it'd be good to see the applications.
Well, I repeat, I will repeat, you have every right to go look at the applications, and if you go to the library and ask, they will gladly let you do that. So, I mean, if you vote no against an applicant like this, who is an active member of the Pella Kiwanis Club, which it's so, one of the things they do is make people's lives better, and we have a great example in this community, with a million, over a million dollars raised for our, our all-inclusive playground. She is also Big Brothers, Big Sisters, what does that do? That makes kids' lives better by adults being involved. She's worked with the Mahaska County Homeless Coalition and the United Way, all of those are programs and organizations that exist to help people, and if we don't think we can support someone like that to serve on one of our boards, it's going to be tough for us to find anybody that's going to serve on any of our boards.
So we can, in the future, Don, we could, we can ask to look at, review?
I did. I contacted the library.
Just to clarification.
Because, because someone asked Mandy, but Mandy doesn't get the applications. As we know, the Library Board is an autonomous board, it's run by themselves, so you have to go to them, and you're welcome to do that.
Okay.
They won't turn away a city council member.
Yeah, all right.
Fred, can we just finish here? We got to get this vote in.
Then I'll vote, yes.
All right, thank you.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
No. Motion passed. All right, moving on, appointment of ad hoc committee for Hawkins Field renovation project, please explain, Mike.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to direct the council's attention to the big board for a brief presentation on this item, as well as the members in the audience tonight, and those watching on Pella Fiber. And what this recommendation is, or this motion is, to point an ad hoc committee for the Hawkins Field, or the plan, Hawkins Field renovation on this, and what we have on this, this will be the duties of the committee, is really to facilitate public input on this as well, and in addition, they're going to make a recommendation to the design, or the ultimate design of the Hawkins Field, for the council's considerations, so Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, we do have the various members that are appointed as serve on this committee, we do have an outstanding city council member that is to be determined on the committee as well, so with that, it is also important to note that our Community Services Director, Ms. Jeanette Vaughn, will also be providing support to the, to the committee as well, so with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions on this item.
All right, before I ask for a motion for approval, Lynn, Lynn reached out to me and wanted to be on this, this committee, so Lynn will be the, I assume you still want to?
I do, very much so.
Lynn will be the city council member that will be part of the committee. So with that, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Dan Stryland, Carl Stone, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. This time, we have opportunity for public forum, anyone wishing to address the council regarding any agenda item, please step forward to microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on, and motion approved, can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Brandon Horst De Young, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to public hearing regarding budget amendment number one for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have Finance Director Brian Lee review this item with the city council.
So yeah, this is the proposed budget amendment.
Do you have a microphone? Probably be better if you, maybe, just so that people on TV can hear.
Good evening, yeah, so this is the proposed budget amendment number one to the budget, the state requires that if at any point we anticipate or do exceed one of the nine budgeted areas that we budgeted, we have to amend the budget, which basically gives the city the legal authority to incur those expenses for the budget fiscal year, which will end here on June 30th this year. We're budgeting, there was a list of the amendments, or the actual reasons why we're budgeting, or amending the budget, some of that comes from project timing, so things that we thought were going to be included in this year's budget, when we did it last year, but aren't going to happen, we kind of removed those. Other things that carried over from the previous fiscal year that actually occurred in this one, that we weren't anticipating we'd have to increase the budget for that, so a lot of it is due to project timing, other items approved by the council that were budgeted for, and then the last thing, just actual increases in the cost, so one of those big ones, we just approved. You saw the insurance bill last, excuse me, meeting, so, you know, property insurance was a lot higher when our renewal came than what we had budgeted for, so that's a reason for the increase. It's important to note that no increases in the property tax rate for the current fiscal year is proposed with this, so all increases to the budget will either covered by increased fees that we received, the revenues throughout the year, or will just be covered by the reserves that the city holds for the different funds, so. Last one, and then the amendment results in a debt, or a net decrease of the fund balance by about 1.4 million overall for the city's funds that we project by the end of the fiscal year. And staff does recommend the approval of the, the budget amendment. Questions?
In our packet, we have the whole list of all the changes, so. Okay, thanks, Brian. Mandy, any written comments?
No written comments.
Any comments, counsel? Any member in the audience that says an open, uh, public hearing? Any comments from the, anyone out there? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
De Young, Carl Stone, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
De Young?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to the resolution now, six, six nine eight, entitled Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year Twenty-three, Twenty-four Annual Budget by Adopting Budget Amendment Number One, adopted, any to have? Can I get a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Brandon Horst, Carl Stone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number six six nine nine, entitled Resolution Adopting Medical Plan Premiums for Fiscal Year Twenty-four, Twenty-five, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have our Human Resources Director, Mandy Smith, review this item with the city council.
Yeah, so this is very much an alignment with what we discussed at the last meeting, just to sum up, approval of this would mean we would offer two plan options to our employees now, we've always offered the co-insurance plan, which is up here as number one, there are no premium changes to that at all, so premiums would stay the same, employees pay 10% of that premium, approval would mean we'd start a copay plan, too, so this would be basically the employees' choice on what works for them financially, the copay plan would bring in office and prescription copays, which helps financially, the premiums are a little bit higher, and employees would pay 15% of those, the reason for that is that the city's contribution would be pretty much the same, no matter which plan the employee chooses, whether they go with the co-insurance or copay. Upon approval, this would be effective July first of the fiscal year, and I would start an open moment process tomorrow for people to make their choices, so.
Okay, any questions? Thanks, Mandy. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
De Young, Carl Stone, any discussion? Okay, all, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
De Young?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number six seven zero zero, entitled Resolution Determining the Necessity in Setting Dates of a Consultation and Public Hearing on a Proposed West Side Urban Renewal Plan for a Proposed Urban Renewal Area in the City of Pella, Iowa State, or Pella, State of Iowa, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and as Mayor Ward stated, what we're discussing this evening is a proposed urban renewal plan for the city's west side. It is important to note, really what this resolution would do would establish July second is the public hearing date for formal adoption of the plan, and also the public hearing date for the plan as well. Now, overall, when we talk about urban renewal plans in the city of Pella, the intention of this plan is to stimulate economic development, specifically commercial and industrial development. The area that encompasses the plan is the yellow highlighted area up here on the big board, and just to explain the purpose of this, this is the required legislative stat under the state code within, and anytime you hear urban renewal, oftentimes it's often associated with tax increment financing, and one of the items that would allow the city to do, if the city council adopts this plan, is to capture any new valuations or incremental valuations that are the result of economic development with that, and so that's kind of how TIP works in Iowa, so again, when we look at the valuations that are currently there in existing businesses, those valuations would be frozen for purpose of incremental value on that, and future incremental value would be added to the TIP on that as well, so that's generally how it works, so when we talk about, if you're talking about new values, new buildings that are currently in existence. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the main projects that we have a part of the plan, we have the potential reconstruction in the future of Washington Street, that includes also the installation of utilities that may occur on Washington Street. In addition, we have proposed improvements at the Pella Municipal Airport as well, and furthermore, one of the key priorities that we've had, not key priorities, but it's been a priority of the city council to upgrade throughout the roads, we've also included a segment of West Ninth Street in the plan as well, but once again, we want to simply state, there's going to be more information on July second, really what this resolution does, it starts off the planning process, and it establishes the public hearing date for July second, and also establishes the consultation date with both Marion County, as well as the Pella Community School Districts, if they'd like additional details on the plan. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff's presentation, be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
De Young, Carl Stone, discussions?
How the boundaries get drawn? As you can go back, how the boundaries get drawn on that?
That, that is based off the staff review on what we had, and it's also important to keep in mind that the city has traditionally had an urban renewal district on the west side of our community. Under Iowa law, the boundaries cannot be exactly the same, it should differ from the previous version, so right around late, actually the late nineties, we had a TIP district that was called the West Interchange TIP District, and so what we had here is the boundaries were drawn in consideration of other TIP districts that are in existence, for instance, the very rich TIP district that's out over here, in addition, we also had to consider the boundaries that were previously associated with the West Interchange TIP District, and the last consideration that we had is likely areas that will develop along the Washington Street corridor. The final consideration is, keep in mind, and also something to be remiss if I did not state, in order to adopt the plan, there has to be a finding that the urban renewal plan is consistent with the city's comprehensive development plan as well, which we believe this plan is, and so that's long, I would summarize, how the boundaries came to be and what we're considering for this plan.
This is really hard and toward whatever.
Yeah, usually what we've done with new TIP districts is we establish what we call a solid base plan, that we feel relatively comfortable with, now you could always add in the future, it does, that will require an amendment, but usually when we add in the future with amendments, it's known developments in the future as well.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
De Young?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, ordinance number ten thirty-eight, titled An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa, by amending the boundaries of the institutional district to include the property located at three oh three Liberty Street, directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and the date of this change on the official zoning map. This is the third reading, does anyone need to be refreshed on this? Does anybody out there need to be refreshed on this? Otherwise, I'm going to just ask for a motion for approval.
Make your first.
De Young, Carl Stone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
De Young?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Now I need a motion for approval to adopt the ordinance, to adopt ordinance number ten thirty-eight.
Still moved.
I'll give it to Butler.
That's all right.
And Brandon Horst, support. All right, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Butler?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number ten thirty-nine, entitled An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance in the City of Pella, Iowa, by amending the boundaries of the institutional district to include the property located at three oh four Liberty Street, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and the date of this change on the official zoning map, and this is the same thing, third reading. Does anybody need a refresher? Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to, for approval.
Move to that.
We're not adopting yet.
So moved.
So we're approving the zone, yeah. So De Young, Dan Stryland, any, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
De Young?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Now I need a motion for adoption of ordinance number ten thirty-nine.
So moved.
Carl Stone.
Support.
Brandon Horst. Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler? Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number ten forty, entitled An Ordinance Amending City Code Chapter one sixty-five, Table one sixty-five point twelve dash two, permitted uses by zoning district to expand where micro breweries are permitted, again, this is the third reading, is there a desire for an explanation from up here, or out there? All right, then I will entertain a motion for approval.
Still moved.
Still move.
Brandon Horse, Carlstone, all in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horse?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Now I need a motion for adoption of ordinance number 1040.
Move to adopt.
Brandon Horse, Carlstone, all in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horse?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1041, entitled An Ordinance Amending Water Rates in the City of Pella, Iowa. This is the second reading. Mike, walk us through this one, please.
I'd be happy to, Mayor. I've been there for a while. I was hoping you'd let me off the hook on this one, too. So, all righty. I would like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. Mayor Ward stated what this ordinance would do is decrease water rates in the city of Pella by seven percent effective on June first. So that would be usage after June first. It is important to note that we did discuss this during policy and planning on April 16th. The ordinance is in a similar form as what we discussed on April 16th as well. Now, as far as the overall increase, it's necessary to cover the cost of the operating expenses and tackle the needs of the water system. And what we have up here on the big board is what the current water rates are and what the proposed increase is. For most residential customers, this is going to be somewhere near a three, three dollar fifty to four dollar increase per month as far as the water utility. And as for residential customers that use 7,000 gallons of water per month. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, it is important to note for the June first deadline, we are requesting waiver of the third reading of this ordinance for council's consideration as well. And if approved with the ordinance, this would be the rules that would be due on July 20th of this year. So that concludes the staff presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions regarding this proposed rate increase.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Or Brandon Horse, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horse?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on the third and final reading.
Brandon Horse, Carlstone, thank you, Lynn, for doing that.
Sure.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horse?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Brandon Horse and Straylin, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horse?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. I get a motion for approval of abstract bills number 2151. DeYoung, Carlstone, any discussion or questions? About the smallest number of bills we've paid in a long time. Okay, all in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Brandon Horse?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business that you would like to address this evening?
I'd just have a quick kind of observation. And I was assuming that Chief was going to be here, but you could send my message back. During Tulip time, I had some visitors from Kansas City that had been witness to the shooting during the Super Bowl parade. And they were extremely apprehensive about coming and being amongst a crowd. And they spent about five minutes on the square and witnessed what they called the silent police presence. And they felt completely comfortable. And out of everything, that was the main memory that they took away from Tulip time in our community is that we made them comfortable to go back into a crowd again. And for that, I'll always be grateful. Sometimes we think it's all about the flowers and about the costumes and the songs, but sometimes it's about that silent message that our first responders sent. And I'm very grateful for that. Thank you.
Anything else?
And I guess to educate on the exciting things that happen at our indoor pool, there's this dedicated group that does aerobics in the water at eight in the morning. And to experience, educate you folks, I would invite any of you to join me eight o'clock Friday morning, splash around with them.
Pass.
Pass. We'll bring out the extra employees if anyone needs to. I did say I used to teach that in college to make extra money. So I paid my dues.
You may need an extra lifeguard at this group.
Do you do it?
Seriously, there's good, there's good things that happen at that group.
That's cool.
No, I don't. Yeah.
Oh, oh.
My wife is a faithful.
Oh, I thought you went to.
I am continually lobbying.
Okay, anything else? All right, any member of the public have any other business you'd like to address council with this evening? If so, please set forward a microphone, state your name and address. Please limit your time to three minutes.
I'll do my best. Fred Cracus, Lake Prairie Township. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your support for the wonders failing. I didn't get a chance to say that at the last meeting. Really excited about phase three, and I think you'll, you'll be very pleased when we get phase three finished. Thank you. Thank you to Jeanette Chandler as well. They've been great support for this project. Item number two, thank you for supporting Amy Meyer for the library board. I know Amy very well. She's a very active member of our Kiwanis Club. She contributes in a very positive way. I work very closely with her with Habitat for Humanity, which I'm all, I'm sure you're all familiar with. She's actively helping create housing for people who are underserved. So thank you for supporting her with the position of library board. Third item, I just came away from a training to work at the polling booth for a primary, which won't be a big turnout, but it reminded me again of what a great system we have, what a great election system we have. And everybody needs to understand that. I visited a third world country recently that's controlled by the Communist Party. And when I come back here, I'm even more impressed with what we have. So when we hear people talk about election fraud and election integrity, we need to stand up and explain to people what a great system we have, especially here in Iowa. Last point I want to make is probably more in form of a question. I understood a couple months ago that the indoor rec center did not move forward. There were not enough votes to support it. So I'd like to present a friendly challenge to those of you who vote, which would not include the mayor, but those of you who vote, where do you stand on this project? Are you working on it? The impression I got from our most recent report on the project not moving forward is that it's too expensive, which I interpret that to be a statement that we're not big enough to give our employers what they really need. Correct me if I'm wrong. Like I said, I want to present this as a friend, friendly challenge. Go ahead, please.
I'll answer that. We do not have enough money to enter into a contract. We're short about $6 million, $6 to $8 million short. And you can't sign a contract if you don't know where the money's at.
In other words, we're not, we're not big enough to give these employers what they really need.
Well, no, that has nothing to do with it. We don't have the money. We do not have the money. Now, we are going to talk about, again, I have some ideas on things that we can do in lieu of what's been on the table. And so when that comes back around, I'm not, I'm not against building something, but I don't want to build something that straps us into the corner that we can't pay for. So that's, it's, it's money. It's just money.
Is it, is the project actively moving forward?
Well, not at the moment because we have to talk about it some more.
Okay. So what I said is accurate, that our town really isn't big enough for the project. We're telling our employers that we really can't give them what they need.
No, we're not telling them that. We're just telling them we don't have enough money.
Right, we're not big enough.
No. And that last plan called for two gyms. I've had so many people say, we don't need two gyms. We need four gyms. It wasn't, in my plan, the people I've talked to, you know, this is a big basketball town. We're not going to get tournaments with two gyms. Wasn't a good plan.
Who put the plan together? Was it a group of citizens who work in the renovation area?
No, it was, it was, it was, you know, contractor or company. Well, might even have to answer that. What was the?
There was an eleven, there was an eleven member of citizens who belonged with the architect, engineer, and staff.
I appreciate the feedback. I just, I just want to think, I think we need to be careful if we don't send the message to our employers that we can't give them what they need. We know what happened to Sheridan, right? And most recently, we heard a report that Fairway is moving out of Boone to Johnston after the voters turned down a rec center there to connect the dots.
We need two things. Have to do the right plan, telling you, you have the money to pay for it.
And you're working on that?
I believe so.
I just visited Norwalk on my way back from the state track meet the other day. Have you been to Norwalk lately? Member of the Little Hawkeye Conference, right? Fellow and fellow Christian, same conference. Have you seen Norwalk?
Seen it on TV.
Pardon me?
I saw it on TV.
Yeah, I encourage you to visit. And you can say, you can say Norwalk is a bigger town than Pella, which suggests that Pella's not big enough for what we need to keep our employers happy. We have, we have to work hard at this. I've been around this town for a long time. We have to work overtime to make this town what it needs to be to keep these great employers. So the two of you who've responded, I really appreciate that.
I'll, I'll say one, one more thing, that when we talk about keeping the employers here, here's the problem. Here's a problem that we can't fix. We have three main employers, I think. Telecorp from your PPI. Young people today want to come and work for a company for five years, then they want to jump to another company and get a 50% raise. Well, they can't do that in Pella. Now, we used to live in Bloomington, Illinois, State Farm get quartered there. They had the same problem. And Bloomington, Illinois is 150,000 people. They had all kinds of attractions, but it wasn't enough. See, people wanted to live in Atlanta, or Arlington, Texas, or Phoenix, bigger cities, metroplexes, if you will. So we can't solve that problem in Pella. What we have to do, what I think we have to do is we have to sell what we've got. We've got safety. We've got two great high schools. We've got a college. We have light traffic. I mean, you know, we, you can get around town. We, we have a lot of great things going on. There's a lot of things to do. There's Pella Historical Society. There's, there's pet, pet, paddleboard, what are they called? Pickleball, pickleball groups. And I mean, there's a lot going on. So we, we can't fix the problem that there aren't enough employers in town for these young people that are ambitious sort of want to jump from one company to another and get a big pay increase because it's not really happening in Pella. We, we, we got to sell what we've got. What we've got is the greatest little town in Iowa.
My question had to do with the rec center.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that, this is the rec center. We can't.
And you're going to make it happen? You're going to make it happen?
Well, listen, Ames, Iowa's building an aquatic center, spending $30 million. We want to build a rec center, spend 35 million. Ames has 66,000 people. We have 10,000.
See, I don't like the message that we're sending, that we're not big enough to give these employers what they want. That bothers me.
The, the employers are going to have to do what's best for them. That's what we're going to do. If we, we build the wrong rec center, and they still say, well, we're moving to Des Moines.
Fred, I appreciate your presence. Obviously, on the surface, I'm in full support of the rec center. It was originally planned, established, and the community had great minds working on it. We cut, 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 shaved, and elections happened. I think you heard loud and clear, I think you're on the right track for some of us on this board. They want to leave it as is, which if it happens, it will no longer be the town he's destroyed. And some of us see that vision forward, and some of us don't. So it does come down to vision. It comes down to things that we're investing versus scarcity mindset, which is what I'm fearful of. You don't buy houses with cash. Very few of us are able to buy houses with cash. You buy houses with what you can foresee you'll be able to afford. I think the short side in this could very well be the mark of the end of the great town.
I think I heard them both commit that they're going to work on this, right? They're going to, they're going to make it happen. They're going to make it happen, right?
But we got to work on it.
And what are the steps?
Well, we got to talk about it. And, and we've got a design that's not appropriate, I don't think. We have enough money donated to build something.
You just heard the report that there's another million dollars. Hmm? There's another million dollars on the table.
That was for the road.
Right. That's a big, that's a big thing.
It is, yeah.
So what steps will you take to make this happen? And what's the schedule?
Well, we got to get it on the agenda and talk about it.
Okay.
And I don't, and I don't control the agenda.
Next meeting?
Ask them. I don't control the agenda. I'd be happy to talk about it today.
Okay. Well, that's why I'm asking the question. Thank you very much. Appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Twenty-five oh nine, it's called Destrot. A couple of days ago, we lost our power, and I wondered why that was.
You don't, I assume it transformed Destrot by lightning, but I don't, do you have any, do you have any electric?
Electric. Is Nate Spurgeon online?
He's not.
It was out for two or three hours.
Yeah, I heard that. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I didn't hear the reason why.
Mr. Young, Mr. Young, I'll follow up with our staff. We'll attach the other reasons for the outage on that.
I heard that it was due to lightning, and that the, the reset didn't reset or something. But the same thing happened earlier this year, and they, it was due to the batteries that expired. They were going to replace the batteries so that it wouldn't happen again. But it, but it has happened again.
We'll follow up on it, and we'll get an explanation on that to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? All right, then we're going to move into our policy and planning. We've got four items to discuss. We're going to start with our proposed development agreements.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And what we're looking for this evening is feedback from the city council on it. And staff has been in negotiations, and we've been working with three separate developers on, three separate housing projects that we have listed up here on the big board. Now, overall, the housing developments that we're talking about this evening is approximately 166 additional housing units for our community. Now, a couple of things to keep in mind when we talk about new housing, and really how we evaluated and staffed and considered the side of traditionally additional housing, but the need for housing has been a strategic goal. The city council stated in the city's comprehensive plan. We believe that's very much the case today as well. Now, one of the items that we have outside of housing assessments that we use to measure the need for additional housing in our community is industry standards. And generally, we look at the planning and zoning world. What the recommendation is, is to have three to five years of buildable lots within your community. And when we refer to buildable lots, we're talking about new residential or residential subdivisions that are shovel-ready. The reason for that is generally with each one of these developments, it's been our experience on new housing subdivisions, particularly greenfield subdivisions, it takes approximately two years to bring a housing subdivision before they're ready to sell lots. Usually, the first year is legislative requirements and also the engineering for the project. That usually takes about one year. And when you look at that second year, it usually involves building the infrastructure, the public infrastructure for the development. So it's about the third year it's ready to go. So it's important that you have buildable lots on, on hand. Now, as far as the standards go, we try to be conservative on what we actually issue, but that number could be anywhere from 45 up to 70 building permits a year for residential lots. Now, by industry standards, we believe that we should have an inventory between 135 and 225 buildable lots in our community. Currently, we have 29. I will say this, these housing subdivisions that we've recently authorized at the city council level, the issue is, is they've been extremely popular, and they are in demand, and we've issued lots of building permits over the last year. But we've had one housing subdivision that we've recently proved up to be a temp review subdivision. They're still working through the environmental review process at the federal and state level on that. And that's been somewhat delayed. But currently, what we have as far as lots available is 29. So based off our analysis, and this is outside any, any housing assessments, but we would tell you, based off industry standards, and what we're seeing in the field is housing is in need in the city of Pella. So let's. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, what we're gonna be proposing ultimately for these housing developments, it's important to realize, we're gonna be proposing economic development incentives for one of the housing subdivisions. And the reason for this is generally when you look at new greenfield sites, so this is usually ag property that's being proposed to be converted over to residential housing, probably one of the biggest, well, it is one of the biggest impediments that developers typically run into, is the cost to install public infrastructure. We're gonna be going over the estimated cost for one of these developments, but from our standpoint, when you consider where the city is with buildable lots right now, traditionally it's been a strategic priority of the city to add additional housing. We've certainly heard that from the employers in town, the need for additional housing as well. We believe economic development incentives are warranted. Now, regardless of what we say or not, one of the things that this ultimately comes down to anytime you consider economic development incentives is would the development happen without the economic development incentives? Looking at the economics of these particular housing developments, considering the need on this and what's been done in practice, we do not believe that the development would be proposed that we're gonna be discussing today without the use of economic development incentives. Please keep that in mind as we discuss these developments. Now, the avenue that we have, is we've tried to be consistent with each one of the developments in what we're proposing, we are proposing that each one of these developments would involve formation of a new urban renewal plan, similar to what we just considered the CME when we set the public hearing to the West Side Urban Renewal, so these would be newer renewal plans. And we're also proposing the use of tax increment financing. Now, what tax increment financing is commonly referred to as TIF, is what we're looking to do is within each one of these subdivisions, if you were to go out there, you would see vacant farmland. What we're hoping to do by establishing the urban renewal is capture the new incremental value. So when we talk about tax increment financing, we're hoping to capture the property taxes from new buildings that do not exist, so these are new buildings. And a portion of the tax revenue would be rebated back to the developer to reimburse them for the cost of public infrastructure. The way TIF works, when you factor in with the new urban renewal plan and the capture of property taxes, what actually gets back to the developer is about 50% of the property taxes that would be generated from the development on this as well. And the reason for that is the taxing in these of the developments would still give the debt service levy from the new, new homes constructed. However, we're gonna be explaining this here very shortly, we're gonna be required to hold funds from each one of these developments to spur low and moderate income housing, or apply for low and moderate income housing in the future as well. So what's being proposed is the developer would go in, they would install the public infrastructure, we would collect the incremental value or the value of the new property taxes from new homes, we would rebate about 50% back to rebate, reimburse the developers over the course of time. To point the note that the developers under what's being proposed would not be reimbursed if not civilized sold, there's no property taxes, there's no reimbursement. We're simply reimbursing the developer for the property taxes the city of Pell receives. Therefore, when you look at this agreement from city staff standpoint, we believe most of the risk for these housing developments is still with the developer on this as well. So please keep that in mind as we go through tonight's presentation. I would also be remiss if I did not state, looking at the economics, it's vital that each one of these TIF districts has a 15-year life. Legislatively, we could approve a 10-year TIF district by the city of Pell. If Marion County and the Pell community, the school district agreed, we can add five additional years onto these TIF districts, so that'd be a 15-year TIF district. Council proceeds or approves setting the schedule and proceeding with these developments. We'll be establishing a schedule very similar to what we did with the West Side Urban Renewal District in the future on each one of these developments. We'll also set up dates that we could visit with the school district in Marion County on the five-year extension as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the LMI, we mentioned what that low and moderate income housing is. Under state law, if you're proposing housing that is not considered low and moderate income housing on this, which these are not considered under state law, low and moderate income housing, the state says you could use economic development incentives to encourage the development. The key is, is when you look at the overall with all the tax increment financing rebates, remember we said the developer's gonna end up with about 50% of the overall rebate. The reason why it's that low is we have to set aside a percentage of that tax increment rebate to be used as low and moderate income housing within our, within our community. And what that percentage is, is when we talk about low and moderate income, those would be incomes no greater than 80% of the median income in the county. And Marion County is a percentage of people that are at that level, the residence is 36.77%. So if you look at it from a math standpoint, when you look at the tax increment financing revenues, you back off the respecting jurisdictions, debt service levy, then you take that number times basically 64%, that's what goes to the developer, that's 50%. We're gonna have 36% of those funds that we're going to have to use for low and moderate income housing on this. So even though this is not low and moderate income housing, we're gonna generate funds for use to benefit low and moderate income families within our communities. So I think that's a benefit from what we're considering this evening. Now, if each one of these developments builds out over time, and we reach the full level of rebate agreement for the developers, that would mean that we would have roughly $3.5 million of funds available to support low and moderate income housing in Pell. So, practice history says these developments do very well in Pell. Let's hope that keeps up in the, in the future, and if it does, we'll certainly have a good deal of funds available to support low and moderate income housing within our community. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And I believe this first one that we have is the AdCon Development, and this is just south of the Prairie Ridge Development that we currently have, the residential development. What's being proposed by Corplin's Holy LLC is a 35-lot subdivision. It's important to note this development would be constructed in phases. The second phase, Jerry, I believe, is another 47 lots, part of a total of roughly 83 lots within the subdivision. So Phase One is just the 35 lots, it would be right here, so the new Five Field Drive is right up here. Chick-fil-A is located right over here. The Prairie Ridge subdivision is located right up here. Now, what is being proposed with the developer on this is important to note is the proposed terms on the development agreement will be 15 years. The estimated public infrastructure cost, and keep in mind, we said this is one of the impediments to building new housing subdivisions on this, is roughly $2 million. What's being proposed for TIF rebate would be a $2 million tax increment financing rebate over 15 years, it'd be subject to actual property taxes collected, and also subject to the city holding low and moderate income funds. So if the development builds out, it's likely the developer would receive a $2 million rebate on this as well. Now, with the $2 million rebate, if it builds out, the developer, if they receive $2 million, the city of Pell from this development would have $735,000 in low and moderate income funded funds that we would be able to support low and moderate income families within our community as well. What we're also doing, always with this agreement, is something that's very similar to what we considered with the planned unit development, if you recall during the zoning process for this development, we had building design standards, and so it's likely that we'll have building design standards or housing, housing standards for this, for this subdivision as well. So that's the first economic development agreement that's being proposed. Is there any questions on the Corplin's land holding, which is commonly referred to as the AdCon Development in Pell?
Well, does the LMI money come out of the $2 million requested TIF rebate, or?
This is an addition, so, so for the developer, for the developer received $2 million, and for us to receive $735,000, the developer would have to generate $2.7 million roughly in tax increment financing revenues over 15 years.
All right.
All right, let's go ahead to the next one. The next item that we have is the proposed platform for Prairie Ridge, and this is just to the southwest of the development. In fact, it would border right on Highway G-28, Highway T-15 is located right here, but G-28 is over here. The original Prairie Ridge Development is located right over, over here as well. This would be an 84-lot subdivision. Now, the overall intent of this subdivision is for workforce housing once again. And as a result, what the developer is proposing is 84 units that we have. The estimated cost to build the public infrastructure for this development is right at $4.5 million. The developer has requested a TIF rebate for that as well. And if the development builds out, and the developer receives $4.5 million, we have projected LMI funds of 1.6 million from this development. Now, since this is the continuation of the Prairie Ridge Development, for those council members that were involved, and the mayor that was involved with the original Prairie Ridge Development, if you recall, we had roughly 90 single-family housing units as well. It's my understanding the lots have been sold in the original Prairie Ridge Development. To date, Jerry, I believe we've issued 70 some building permits from Prairie Ridge as well. So it's been enormously popular. Now, what we're proposing with this development is it's gonna resemble the Prairie Ridge that currently is there. Staff's understanding the lots are gonna be a little bit wider, it's been 50-foot lots, and 55-foot lots, or 60-foot lots, and we're actually going to see a few three-car garages as well. But one of the caveats that we have, since this is geared towards workforce housing on this, is that we would propose that we continue on with the subcommittee that we currently have in place with one key addition currently for a house to be built out in Prairie Ridge. It requires the developer's approval of this, and so what we usually have in our package is we have the design of the home, we also have the floor plan, and we have also the selling price of the home. For that building permit to be issued, the developer has to approve it, Marion County has to approve it, and the city of Pell has to approve the application before a home is sold. What we would propose, to make sure it continues to hit the mark for workforce housing, is that we continue on what's called the Housing Committee with this new development, but the only addition would be is the two parties involved, which would be approval of the developer and the city of Pell as well. So we would review all the applications, including the sale price, and if we felt that it was not workforce housing, we would have the right to go back and ask the developer to make suggestions and corrections, which has happened with the current Prairie Ridge development as well. So this would be one mechanism to ensure that the sale price ultimately hits the mark with the workforce housing as well. But once again, the original Prairie Ridge Development, all the lots have been sold, anticipate that we're gonna be hitting that 90 building lots here very, very soon on it as far as building permits that we have. So as far as the financial details, once again, 15 years, infrastructure costs at $4.590, requested TIF rebate of $4.5, and projected LMI funds of just over 1.6 million. Any questions on the proposed Prairie Ridge Development?
So the county is out of the committee because I am a part of this one.
That is correct. Okay, so let's go ahead to Fountain Hills now. This development is being proposed by Mr., and this is Mr. Larry Rosemary Reeves, they're proposing a 47-lot subdivision. The intention of this subdivision is to be very similar to the current Fountain Hill subdivision. As far as the requested terms, once again, very similar, a 15-year proposed TIF district that we have here. The estimated public infrastructure cost on this is $3.1 million. We're also proposing to reclaim $1 million TIF rebate back to the developer. And we also have projected LMI funds from the development of $1,140,000 projected over the 15 years with this. And so, very similar to the other, the financial terms from a, from a mechanism on this, if you wanted to look at it, is what we're proposing because of the shortage of buildable lots in the, in Pell, and also our belief the housing is needed within the community, we're proposing full 100% reimbursements for the public infrastructure costs to the developments for all three developers. Each one of them has a little different requirement, when you talk about the building design on here as well with the, with the developments, but again, from a structure standpoint, it's 100% reimbursement of the public infrastructure cost. Keep in mind, the developer only gets reimbursed if the house is getting built on the news as well. And we only reimburse property taxes that we receive as well. So, any questions on Fountain Hills Platform?
After all, really, how quickly could your structural issues be out, or are you ready to lock summer?
It's very likely, this, we're gonna try to accelerate as much as possible, a few of them, if they receive timely improvements, could be starting infrastructure this spring, but it's likely for most of them that the infrastructure is gonna be built in 2025. So potentially, late summer, early fall, you may see lots available for sale with the three developments.
Larry's here, you have some better time than that, Brad.
I hope it's sooner than that.
You ready to start building infrastructure?
We are.
Okay.
Are these just north of the current ones?
Correct.
Let me put it, so everyone understands, we're lucky to have three, three developers that are willing to make an investment in, in our community, thankful for that. One of the items that we have, and we try to accelerate this as much as possible, but keep in mind, each one of these developments is at a different stage. The AdCon Development Council's already approved the zoning for the property, the property zone is ready to go. So all we have left is urban renewal on, on that, that area, as well as the development agreement. Prairie Ridge will have a rezoning, as well as the urban renewal and the development agreement. Fountain Hills, the property that I believe is zoned appropriately, Jerry, on that? Okay. All right, so we're ready to go on Fountain Hills, but we'll still have to do the urban renewal agreement as well. Generally, when we look at urban renewal plans, if we're doing the standard one plan, we tell people it takes 60 days to establish an urban renewal plan. If we have a rezoning to work through, it can be done at 90 if you're really efficient, the process works smoothly, but generally, we tell people a plan for 120 days. So this is part of the legislative requirements, and it just depends with the developers, how quickly the legislative process moves in the city of Pell, and if there's still ample time, you have to fall to start building the infrastructure.
So I think that what we need, a couple messages council needs to send tonight. One is to staff to get the process rolling on all of these, and the message has to be that we're, council's gonna support these, these TIF projects. That will send a message to our developers that yes, we are gonna support these projects, let's get the ball rolling as fast as we can. So we need to do that. So if anybody has any qualms about approving, approving these TIF, these financial conditions the way that they've been presented, we need, we need to talk about that, see if there's something we can do about it. Otherwise, we need to send the clear message that we're gonna support these projects. As Mike said, we need to appreciate the fact that we got a bunch, we've got three developers that are willing to put the money up front, and if you think about it, if you know anything about time value of money, they're gonna wait 15 years, they're gonna get incremental money back over 15 years, so the current value of what they're gonna give back is significantly less than the money they're putting in to start the project, so. And just one other note before, if there's anything, as you know, you're all aware, because you've been invited to the housing study, so there was a housing study done in 2016, and at that time, Pell, the projection was that Pell would need 966 housing units in three different buckets, rentals, senior, and, and single-family. And so by 2025, which is next year, we're not there, but there's an update to the housing study. I, I went over to Knoxville today to watch the presentation, because I wanted to have the information for our discussion tonight. And the new projection out of the same company is that Pell will need 1,269 housing units by 2035. And I would encourage you all to go to that, to that presentation tomorrow if you can, because there was a ton of very interesting information in there about how they arrived with this, and there's some incredible statistics that Marion County has, that this company goes all over the country and does these types of projects. And he said several times, when you talked about vacant, let's say vacancy rates on rentals, it was like 1.8%. He said, there's nowhere in the United States of America that is that. And so we're really strapped for, for housing in this town. The number, he had a graph that showed the workforce, the number of people in the workforce, and, and the jobs we need, and all of that kind of stuff. So it was pretty fascinating information. But the key takeaway is 1,269, I, I believe they were fairly accurate when they did the 2016, so I think we need to... we need to believe what we're seeing. So that's why we need to be forward, or keep moving forward on creating housing for this community, so.
Time and place?
Tomorrow at eight o'clock at the Opera House, if you would like. So are we sending a message that we're supporting these projects with the TIF?
Absolutely.
Go. Larry, you can start the orange spat tomorrow. You don't need any zoning, you can just get your permit and go. All right?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to Pella Dog Park presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have our community services director, Jeanette Vaughn, review this item with the council. Jeanette, please. So I've not decided to propose a project the city council suggested. Anything you're ready?
Okay, I don't, where's Doig's on here? Doig needs someone to go, is this on?
It's supposed to be green.
Okay, I'll just talk about. I don't want to steal too much thunder from the group that's going to come up after me, but a few things just ahead of time is that we have been working with the Pella Dog Park Association for a few years now to find a location within Pella, and that wasn't successful. We went outside the blocks and found another really great alternative. There's two phases to the project. Right now, we're just looking at doing phase one, which is about just shy of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Part of the location that we're talking about tonight would require the city to enter a land lease with the Corps of Engineers. And just in general, it's a pretty long document, but some of the highlights are is that the term would be somewhere between ten and twenty years as we would negotiate with them. Construction and plans would be approved by the district engineer. Amenities would be owned by the city that are constructed. If there's any damage to them, we would be responsible for replacing them. If a time would come when we would no longer use the facility, we would have to remove those amenities, and we would have to retain insurance for the proposed use. As far as what would be required of our park department is that we would conduct weekly checks down there just to inspect the overall condition and correct any issues that are noted. And then, in some meetings, the Corps has generously offered to assist with providing ground rich services, mowing, and snow removals, so really, it would be a great partnership for the city. And then, the Pella Dog Park Group, I think, is here to see direction from council on what level is the park. So I will turn it over to them, and I think they have some great representatives here, so.
Good evening. My name's Kristy Dykstra, and I live at three ninety Harvest Road here in Pella, and I'm currently serving as the president of the Pella Dog Park Association.
Yes, good evening. My name's Joey Brea, and I live just out west of Pella, serving on the board with Kristy as well.
I would also like to mention or acknowledge that Hugh Howke is here from Army Corps of Engineers, so thank you for being here as well. Since two thousand seventeen, the Pella city staff and the Pella Dog Park Association have made continued efforts, like Jeanette said, to find a suitable location for dog park for area residents. But after multiple attempts to find usable, city-owned land were unsuccessful, city staff reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers. And then throughout two thousand twenty-three, the city staff and the dog park folks met multiple times with the Corps representatives, and these meetings resulted in an ideal location for a fenced off-leash dog park.
Yeah, so I get the pleasure of presenting out on really the fun slide here, which is the design. So starting off with just the location, this would be located north Tailwater on the Pella side of the dam. It's located a convenient four and a half miles from the city square, so far enough out of town that we wouldn't have some of the challenges that we faced in the past, but certainly close enough that one could, it's a short drive, long walk to enjoy this wonderful amenity. You know, we really believe this is an ideal location for several reasons. For one, first and foremost, the land is available, so that is the thing that we've struggled with time and time again. Many of you, you know, have been with us throughout this journey and recognize what a challenge that's been for us. It's far away from residential properties, that's some of the additional challenges we faced in the past, specifically, I think with the first location, maybe it was the second location, Caldwell Park, we had some challenges with nearby residents not being fond of the idea of having a dog park as a neighbor, if you will. And then it's accessible, you know, via car, it's a short drive, like I said, but also, as many of you know, or most of you know, all the trails that, you know, are intertwined down there, so really great accessibilities for residents. The size, certainly finding a piece of land of this size within, you know, the bounds of Pella and that's available and not already being utilized, very challenging. So the fact that we've come across this kind of gem that is three acres not being utilized, available for use, support from the Corps really, again, makes this ideal. The fact that there's nearby restroom facilities, so that was something that we were really going to have to plan on investing in and paying for, not only upfront, but then the additional maintenance of the facilities. So again, there's already existing facilities that the Army Corps of Engineers is taking care of currently. And then, last but certainly not least, again, just having the support from the Army Corps of Engineers, so we're really excited about that. And not only have we received support via the letter that is included in the handout from the operations project manager, Jeffrey Rose, but they're also willing to contribute financially. So they have, they're willing to provide close to fifty thousand dollars for infrastructure improvements, utilities, services, and waived fees. So again, we really just appreciate that partnership with the Corps. Phase one and two are in essence shown up here, so the top three kind of colored boxes there are included in phase one, and those would be different areas of the dog park, separate fenced-off areas. So the far left area would be the tiny old intimate area for dogs. That's an idea through our research and looking at other local parks. We recognize that some of those had those, that sort of zoned off area for those tiny old intimate dogs and was well utilized and appreciated by visitors. And then, in the green area would be the small, followed by the large dog area there on the right. The red area in the bottom right would be included in phase two if park utilization and funds became available, and we would utilize that as like a rotation area. So based on traffic, if an area of the field is being utilized to the point that it maybe needed a little time for rejuvenation, we could close off that section of the park and then utilize that fourth section. Obviously, there would be some kind of basic necessities, if you will, for the park that would be included in phase one, including some walkways, fencing, et cetera. But along with some of the basic necessities, we do have budgeted some really nice amenities as well, including lighting, signage, shade via trees, water, benches. We are currently budgeting for a crushed gravel walkway path there, and then material disposable waste, so doggy waste bags, and a wash station for dogs. So for those folks who drive to the dog park, give them, you know, a means to rinse off dog's feet before they hop back into the vehicle. Next slide. So the first phase of the project is, we're looking at about a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, just shy of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, as Jeanette shared. The Pella Dog Park Association currently has eighty-one thousand dollars raised and in hand, and we would be looking for, to cost share this with the city of Pella to come up with their, you know, a half of that proposed phase one budget.
Is the, just a quick question on the cost, the Army Corps cost, that's not in, that's in addition what they're?
Yeah, that's separate.
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
And maybe to clarify that, many of those items that the Army Corps of Engineers is going to contribute are things such as waived fees, maintenance, and so forth. So in the next step, or the next slide, these are some next steps, and admittedly, this is for our clarification as well, because I think it's just good to get some confirmation on what next steps are as far as we're concerned. So if the city would choose to support this project tonight, we understand that the next step then would be formal consideration of the project's documents, and city council would direct city staff to prepare the land lease and partnership agreements, including the level of funding. And then if the agreements are reached between the city, the Pella Dog Park Association, and the Corps of Engineers, then the city staff would reset the land lease and partnership agreements to city council for approval by September of two thousand twenty-four. Then if the council would approve the agreements, the budget can be amended to include the project, which would then pave the way for construction to begin. That's our, that's our understanding, so. We realize that you, you are not the same council that we presented to back in two thousand seventeen or in years since, but some of you in this room have been making efforts all along to put in time and effort to make this project a reality, and we're really grateful for that. We thank you very much for that. The next slide touches a little bit on collaboration, and I just wanted to mention some of the challenges or hurdles that we faced before that we feel that this option solves. The first one would be land, and as Joey mentioned, as far as land, we had struggled in the past just to find adequate land that was both owned by the city and not already being used for something else, or earmarked for something else. So this option solves that issue. The next thing was just the proximity to homeowners. So in the past, other sites maybe received a little bit of pushback because neighbors didn't want to live close to a dog park, and this option solves that issue as well. And the third one would be the ongoing maintenance cost. So the city doesn't want to take on, you know, substantial ongoing maintenance costs for a park that requires a lot of substantial manpower. So the good thing about this option is that much of the cost and the manpower would be shared by the city and the Corps of Engineers and the dog park people as well. And finally, the cost, initially, the Pella Dog Park Association was encouraged to raise fifty percent of the cost, and then we were encouraged to consider paring down the design so that it was more manageable, and then to expand as funds would allow, and that has been done. So like Joey mentioned, due largely to the fact that there is not needing to be a paved parking lot built, we don't need to build restroom facilities because they're already there right nearby. The cost of building the dog park has been essentially cut in half from the original price in two thousand seventeen, so, I mean, especially given the cost of inflation and the cost of materials, that's quite notable. So in closing, we recognize that this is really a unique opportunity for these three groups, the Corps, the dog park people, and the city of Pella, to work together, to collaborate, to really build a special park, a special amenity for not just the citizens of Pella, but people that visit us and the campers out at Lake Red Rock. The Corps of Engineers thankfully want to be partners in this, and we're so grateful for that. They want to bring this dog park to North Tailwater, which is kind of ironic that it's called Tailwater. So tonight, we ask for your full support of this project as well, and we thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. Any questions for these guys?
I just want to make sure that I understand the maintenance piece, that the expectation on maintenance by the city, what is, what is that? I heard weekly checks. Jeanette, what, like, I know there's so much more to this than just somebody driving out there in a truck and looking around, and I also know that your department is extremely busy.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the reasons why, why I would appreciate this partnership as well, because that was one of the big things, is, you know, four miles out of town, it's not that far, but it will take time. But when you talk about the Corps providing a level of that, kind of that grounds maintenance, it's really just us going out there to check to make sure that everything looks okay and nothing's damaged, that type of thing. Kristy and her group have offered to organize volunteer cleanup days, you know, that type of thing. So I really think that there's enough need and a want for this that I think the help outside of city services will be there to keep it looking nice, yeah.
I guess that's one of my big concerns right away, too, because your staff is already, I think, overstressed with all areas of town. That's a big concern of mine.
I'd just like to add to Corps, we've offered to just wrap up the mowing into our current contracts, we'll take care of the mowing and trimming. We offer to supply signage, and then, of course, we'll have park rangers down there too, you know, that can monitor things as well.
That's my dream park where we show up once a week and look around and go, yep, looks good, and walk away.
This seems to very much benefit campsite that are walkable. Is it, I'm sure it's not desperation, and indeed, it feels like an ideal location for the citizens of Pella, having lived out that direction before. It would be a very long walk to that site, and I don't know, Dog Park now, but is it common to drive your dog to Dog Park? Or, in other words, is it ideal or is it desperation? I love the, I love the three-headed approach, fantastic, but it's a really sort of citizenry, which is obviously our charge, just wanted to talk that out loud.
Yeah, so if I understand your question, you're asking basically, are we settling? No, not at all. And in fact, every time I go out there to the site, it is so perfect, for all the reasons that we listed, plus, it's just beautiful. It's four point five miles, I think, from the city square, so it's not unusual at all for communities to have dog parks at a drivable distance. And even if we had a dog park in the center of town, you know, people are still going to have to get there some way, it's still going to be miles for somebody. So from our house, you know, we live out at Boss Landin, it's just, it's just a quick little trip. So no, it's not, it's not settling. So, no, it's not, it's not settling, it's, it's ideal, it really is, it's beautiful out there.
Does, do they have to pay to put your dog, take your dog there?
So all of those decisions are probably above my pay grade and would probably be handled by the Corps and the city, is what I would say, and we would defer to, to them and their wishes.
And then how many, how many dogs are we talking about? You know, I don't have any idea what kind of utilization that would get, or?
Yeah, so we did a survey, not a survey, but we actually contacted the vets back in 2017 to find out how many dog patients they had, for lack of a better word, and there are over eight thousand dogs in the area that the vets were taking care of here. So I don't know exactly how many there are now, but after COVID, you know, a lot of people got even more dogs during COVID. So not everybody will use the park, just like not everybody uses our other city parks, but what a great, what a great amenity, not just for the dogs, but for the people, you know, that will be coming too. And we've always believed it would end up becoming almost like a community within the community, and there will be friendships made from all walks of life there.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we have to send a message to staff whether to move forward with this project, but it's roughly eighty-five thousand dollars for our chair of this City of Pella to get it built, so, got my sport. When Kristi says it's a perfect place, I've had several conversations with her over the years. If she's happy, Jeanette is happy, it is ninety-one.
He was happy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Just one question. This is Mr. Howell.
Yes.
The lease for the project, and your materials, you have ten years, if it's mine, you have the twenty-year lease.
That's correct.
Okay. And I assume that that would also give the parties the ability to renew the lease after twenty years, traditional terms, correct?
That's correct.
And would subject to, if, traditional of the Court, would we probably likely reserve the property based on the left control? Would the project, the Corps reserve the right to cancel the lease for any reason?
We would reserve the right, that's standard language in a number of leases out there. But we've got a number of leases, Roberts Creek, El Rock, Marina, that's where you should date, but as long as things are running smoothly, you know, there's always, we always renew those.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So the land lease is above and beyond the eighty-five thousand, or it's?
Well, it's, it's my understanding was being proposed is that we enter the land lease with Army Corps of Engineers.
Right.
And then I'm assuming the project could be built by the City of Pella, the Pella Dog Park Association, and contribute funds to support the construction, so we have a twenty-year lease, that sounds like Mr. Howell, we'd have an opportunity to hit a twenty-year to renew it, so the project can continue on past the twenty years, assuming there's no concerns of the parties.
Well, they've certainly been extremely patient with us.
So just, just to clarify, I'm looking at the value that the Army Corps is giving. So the fair market value of the land is ten thousand dollars, which in my reading it means we don't, we don't own it, but we don't pay anything for it. There's no rental payment.
Okay, that's where I had the disconnect.
I thought that's where you were going.
Yeah, because most land leases have a monetary stipend.
Probably has to be like a dollar or something to make it official.
Oh, we could afford to roll.
So yeah, the land is included in their contract.
Okay, thank you, because that's where I had my disconnect, I apologize for that. Well, you've certainly been patient with us, and it's a very thoughtful presentation. And, I mean, I, I'm thinking after reviewing this and seeing this and being involved in this, that it's probably coming to be moved forward with this project.
So I hear the Court's, okay, all right, get the ball rolling. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our third item tonight is certified local government request from a historic preservation commission.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have our planning and zoning director during items, view this request with the City Council.
Evening, I'd like to state this report, this request is from the Historic Preservation to the City Council, and it's a request to allow the City of Pella to file application to become a CLG or a certified local government. In this case, Bruce Borsey and Ronda Kmoder here from the Historic Preservation to back me up in case I fail miserably, but other than that, it's going to be pretty straightforward. CLGs are administered through the National Park System, and basically what it does is it's a designation given to communities who are enthusiastic about preservation of history. The CLG, and all this reads and notes, it was federally mandated as part of the Historic Preservation Act of nineteen sixty-six, so it's been around a long time. In Iowa, Iowa has one of the most proliferation, or has the largest proliferation of CLGs in the country at ninety, and in your packet, you have a list of all ninety of those entities. Part of our due diligence to see if we, HBC and staff have been working on this for quite some time, but we did do a survey of about fifteen communities throughout the state of Iowa, asking their interpretation on how they feel about being a CLG, and we got resounding positives back from all the communities that we talked to. Nobody had any negative comments. We're always, you know, we're always leery about, you know, signing up for something that's federally mandated or a federal program, making sure there are no overarching rules that may affect Pella. And in this case, those communities stated that they were happy to be a CLG, they're very minimal staff requirement, and were easy to work with. In this case, Pella is a unique situation because part of the requirement to go through we're almost halfway there. Per the National Park System, what is required to be a CLG? And it's basically, we have to, we have to create a qualified Historic Preservation Commission, which we already have, and we're sitting in the audience. So the other thing is we have to enforce appropriate state or local legislation for historic preservation. You have a historic preservation ordinance already as Pella municipal codes, we've satisfied that step. Third is maintain a system for survey and inventory of local historic resources. What we happen to have is the historic, the Pella Historic Trust, which probably has almost ninety percent of the city surveyed, so we have that step well to be completed. We also need to facilitate public participation in local preservation and historic initiatives. Between the trust and the HBC Commission, we've met that box. And then finally, what we need to do is follow the CLG rules for the state of Iowa, and the basic requirement of that is filing a yearly report with the state ship or the state office for historic preservation that we have done certain steps and rules, and that will be something fairly simple to do with the look at the HBC and staff. The benefits of being a CLG really is federal funding. The National Park System sets aside multiple billions of dollars a year, Iowa gets roughly a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and those ninety entities in your packet are the ones that apply for those grants. Now, do they all get, you know, apply for them yearly? No, so it's a good chance that Pella would be able to get some grants every year, something we could use it for. Recently, we're looking to certify the Pella Historic Fire Station as on the National Register. We had to pay for that to hire the person to do it, this way we could have gotten a grant to pay for that, and Pella would have been out no money. So that's one of the things that we can do. With that, I'll be glad to ask Ronda or Bruce if there's anything else you'd like to come up and mention.
I think one of the, one of the things I've talked to most of you about is, we do have everything in place that we need, that the state requires to be a CLG, we have our ordinance, but the main thing is there's a, there's a clause in our ordinance that would need to be amended. We have added, in addition to the Secretary of the Interior standards for, for guidelines, we have added that the Dutch Design Review is in there as well, and the state sees those as possibly conflicting. When I look at it, I don't feel that the Dutch Design Review guidelines are necessary in our ordinance, because what the Secretary of the Interior standards would do is that if a house would, say, burn down or something, and you would do infill housing, it would have to fit in with the current neighborhood. So whatever houses were there, and if there were some that had Dutch characteristics, then you could build a house with Dutch characteristics. If they were a neighborhood full of foursquares, then you would probably build a foursquare. So I don't see that to be a huge detriment if we remove that from the ordinance, and then we would be in compliance, and we would be able to be a CLG, and we would be able to benefit from the grants and educational opportunities and, and other assistance from SHPO. So we've been working on it for, I think I've been working on this for eleven years, so.
As long as the dog park.
Longer, longer. And I, I think it's a great program, and like Gerald said, I haven't talked to a community, and I go to the Preserve Iowa Conference every year, and I have for several, several years, I have never heard anybody that says, man, this was a pain, we had to do this or this. So I think it's a great program, and would benefit us greatly.
A follow-up question, this theoretical house burns down, who, who works with the party that wants to build a house in this place to make sure everything fits?
Initially, I think they would, they would have a plan, and they would present it to the, to the Preservation Commission. I think that that would be a first-time thing for, for our commission, so I would utilize the expertise of SHPO and say, here's a plan, and, and what do you think? And I know that, I know that a lot of the perceptions when we say restoration, preservation, and people think that you have to build this house exactly as it was before, and that isn't true. And if you, if you want to remodel the house, that's fine, the, the state understands that nobody's going to live in a nineteen-twenty house as if it were nineteen-twenty, and the only way that you can preserve a historic home or a historic building is to use it. I mean, we all know that if you just leave it sit, it's just going to deteriorate. So they want people to be able to upgrade their house, and they want people to be able to, to make improvements so that it's comfortable living for as we live now. So I think they're very accommodating.
And the key to remember about this is that only applies in existing historic districts. So ninety percent of Pella would not apply with, but in Sculte, the collegiate area, and possible McLeachy Mill, that's where the HBC has to review a certificate of appropriateness for these processes, which we already do now.
So, because that was going to be my question, by becoming the certified local government, does not expand any of those requirements outside of the historic districts?
No.
Okay.
The other thing I'd like to, also, why not, correct me if I'm wrong, but a design permit is issued by the Historic Preservation Commission. If there's a disagreement between the applicant and the commission, the applicant always has the right to appeal the decision to the City Council as well, so City Council is actually the final decision if there's a disagreement going through the designer review process for, for our Preservation Commission.
I think it's an amazing program, and I felt that way even before I was elected to office, as you and I said, and grant presentations and the grants were close to us because we, we could not, we were not a certified local government, and I'm talking, there was one that was one point five million dollars, and I feel like we're leaving a lot of money on the table by not doing this. It, it, it will be a benefit to our community, historic tourism is a huge thing right now. We have a lot of things that have had deferred maintenance that we'll be able to fix now, and we'll have some really good guidelines as well.
Yeah.
Being a CLG.
Yeah, and I'd like to, I'd like to clarify, too, that the Secretary of the Interior standards, and it sounds like, oh, this is going to be really cumbersome, really, a lot of that is they have different, they call them bulletins for how-to. So if you're going to do tuck pointing on a building, there's guidelines for, for best practices, so you don't end up doing something you have to redo. For instance, the very, very soft brick that we have in Pella, you need to use a special mortar for that, an older mortar, you can't use the new hard mortar, or you're going to cause failure with the brick. And so I find that to be very helpful, and I think there are a lot, there's lots of information in those standards that's, that's helpful and not cumbersome.
I'd also like to talk about, one of the items we've talked about, we discussed this, we started real on the same page, but we have federal aid routes in, in the city, oftentimes we have to go through a historic review before we are able to do this reconstruction. If we were a CLG, there's a potential that the commission would be able to assist the city with the historic review timeline, because right now we have to deal with the state Historical Office. There's, there's a chance that some of these functions that perform at the state will be delegated to our own commission, which that could actually accelerate a project for the city.
Well, one of the things that we talked about was a survey of the city, and that's one of the first things that they generally recommend to be done, and if we had that survey of the city, we would know when you went into those roads, these are, these are the properties that we have to, to do the study for. And I think that Section 106 is basically wants to do a study to make sure that, that the construction itself, the vibrations and so forth, aren't going to harm the houses nearby, which is also a benefit to the city, because you've had this study now, someone's basement, foundation cracks, you've had this study to say, no, this wasn't supposed to harm your basement, it must be something else. So I think that serves as a protection for the city.
I agree.
Why hasn't this been done soon? I'm new to this seat, and a few that have been working on it, eleven years. What's been fresh in points before?
I, I am not totally sure.
I think people were afraid of it.
I'm in from my perspective, this last question I just asked, was on the federal aid routes and potentially the view, instead of looking at, I guess, there's a concern that you would have another agency that you would have to get a review or approval from in addition to the state, which may hinder projects, and if we were able to work together and accelerate projects as we work together, as it would, onto that approach, that's been a difficult concern that's been voiced on it.
I, I think that we're entering into a time in the community that I think is fabulous, where we're, to the mayor's point earlier, where we are ascertaining more grants, and it wasn't a practice that we historically did before, and that prior to that, there was, there was a lot of misunderstanding, and the thought that, that we changed something was, the unknown was unbearable.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you. Sounds good, Lou. Yeah, I guess just, other than it sounds like maybe there would have to be an ordinance change, suburbage and ordinance, what else have to, what do you have to do?
That's the only thing I think that we would have to do.
You just declare yourself this, or?
No, no, we'll have to file an application to the state of Iowa and do that process, but part of that is the ordinance change. Elaborate real quick, I see, is that basically, under a CLG, it's, you use the Department of, the federal standards. We in Pella use Pella standards because we're Pella. But in those historic, so only in the historic preservation areas do we need to change it from Pella standards to federal standards, and that's, and most of our guidelines that we've written are only for commercial versus residential, so it's really a moot point.
All right, sounds like there's sport from the council. All right, moving, thank you. Our last item is community service fees.
Ms. Mayor, I'd ask Jeanette Vaughn to walk us through this item as well, and before we begin, get started. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Jeanette Vaughn to walk us through this item as well, and, um, before we then get started, I'd like to remind council coming through and deals of the FY twenty-five budget discussions that we had. If council is well aware, the state of Iowa has recently enacted property tax legislation in, in the state. We talked about how the property tax bill limitations, we're going to have to take a look at user fees on this. And one of the first steps in looking at user fees is the program associated with our community services department. That's really the reason why we're reviewing fees this evening. In the future, we're also going to be reviewing planning and zoning fees as well. So, with that, and Jeanette, if you'd actually read this item with the city council.
Sure, thanks, Mike. Um, yeah, so as Mike, as Mike pointed out, um, we maybe need to look at what the cost of operating some of our facilities. Our first, um, one that we would like to address is the aquatic fees. Um, and we're talking specifically towards some of the annual passes, um, and fees that we have. And the last time we updated our annual and three-month pass fees was in twenty fourteen. Um, we like to try to look at other facilities that offer the same amenities as we do, and there's not very many of them in the state. So, we, um, so in coming up with these new proposed rates, we looked at what some of those facilities are doing, and then, um, that's where our proposal kind of takes that in, into mind. Um, the outdoor fees, we did just update a couple of years ago, so we're not recommending any fees, um, increases for those passes. The one big change on the passes that we're, um, proposing is to cap the family passes, or have a base fee for up to five family members, and then have an additional fee for each extra person holding that five. That's become very, um, very commonplace at aquatic facilities right now. There are some facilities that are going to just straight individual rates, they don't even sell family, um, passes anymore, everyone in the family would need to buy a pass. So, this is a, I think, a good bridge and a good option for that. So, the only change we would be recommending to the outdoor, um, fee is to, um, leave the base fee set, but then have that extra person fee added. It was a very long memo, I apologize for that, but we have a lot of rates. Yeah, go ahead and go to the next one. Um, and then just, uh, looking at, uh, some of the other rates that we, that we charge at the, at the pool, we don't do a lot of these, but in researching other facilities that offer these same type amenities, we were woefully, um, underpriced compared to some of our competitors. So, our birthday party rate, which are, which are very popular, we do actually do quite a few of those, indoor, after-alma rentals, at the indoor pool, at the outdoor pool. So, we're just proposing rates to bring us up more even than what other facilities of our type charge for those. Um, and then our, um, next option we're looking at is we've seen a, a spike in what other communities charge first swimming lessons. Um, and again, uh, we're pretty low compared to, even some of our, our neighbors in Knoxville and Oscarosa, um, run a lot in the Moore area. So, not, not significant increases, but yet, um, these rates will allow us to, um, recoup like our labor costs now associated with offering lessons. And then, um, our, our fees are all based on resolution, we did that back in twenty-ten, because we do, um, take a look at the cost of, for us to operate the program. So, having a, a minimum and a maximum allows us to flex those fees depending on the types of classes that we're offering and the costs associated. So, for the, for the remainder of the, the fees in the department, um, we're just recommending to increase the maximum fee in that scale. Um, and this would just allow us to, uh, if we, if we were directed to, or needed to look at increasing some of those art programming or recreation programming, we would have the bandwidth to do it. So, at this time, we're not recommending any changes to the, to recreation and art programming fees, um, from what we're currently offering, just, uh, increasing that maximum. And then, um, a couple cleanup items for facility rentals, like shelter, uh, shelter houses, they're not shelter houses, but like, uh, the auditorium and room two oh six at the conference center, having both a resident and a non-resident rate, um, just to be more consistent. The, the mull and ground in McLaughlinville, we don't do a ton of, uh, rentals in those areas, but they typically take up a whole, a whole day. So, we're just, uh, we'd like to have that just be a daily rental, not, um, for the shelter houses, we have two different, we have an AM rate, uh, or booking time. Um, and, oh, and then as, just as an additional housekeeping item, a twenty-five-dollar late fee, um, add to the fee table. And that's just, uh, we've always had a late fee for a registration program, and it's just never been included in the resolution, so, uh, we're just adding that. And then the, the next few slides are just showing like a, a red line changes that we're proposing to the, the current fee schedule. And that was all later patented as well. And then a couple other, um, cleanup items just have to do with what facilities that we have available. Um, obviously, we do, we know a lot of how to call about tennis courts. And then, um, out at the sports park, if we book tournaments or smaller tournaments that only use a couple of fields, and we operate concessions for them, um, we, we charge a fee for having staff there. And then, um, pickleball, back in twenty-ten, we didn't have pickleball courts, so we're just adding those rates back in as well. There's one.
How's this last one?
This is the last one, okay. If we, uh, if we go forward with the proposed rates for the, at the aquatic center, we feel it would generate a prime sum of maybe twenty-five thousand dollars in additional revenue. Um, the community services board has reviewed these proposed fee adjustments, and they are recommending approval. And if council was in favor, we would propose making these effective for the next fiscal year. And with that, I'll take any questions, I know that was a lot, a lot of numbers to talk about at the end of the night.
Thanks, Jeanette, any questions or comments?
Personal comment, I, I think charging extra for large families discriminatory, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I'll give a second.
I'm sitting here thinking, this applies right to you, Trump.
Thank you for doing this, there was a lot of work put into this, appreciate it, it all looks very fair to me.
Yeah, good comparison with other pools and races, right?
Here we have.
I mean, we're unique in that we have both an indoor and outdoor facility, in fact, I have Alex here, who are our pool managers. I'm, I'm not really sure who else has.
This might be a little further than, than the research, but, uh, you know, I don't have community of the rest. I have a lot of facilities as well, and you, I would assume that our rental rates would go up for those newer nicer facilities, would you dabble in that area, any?
Yeah.
Concerns that might be up here?
You know, I, I think it just depends on, on what we would end up constructing, whether we have a recreation pool or just a competition pool or both. But as far as, um, the outdoor facility, we feel like we're, we're pretty competitive. With the, with the indoor facility, um, I'm not sure that our rates would go up a whole lot, but we would just be able to offer so much more programming. Um, I think our last round of swim lessons sold out in three minutes. So, um, you know, and, and fortunately, with the recent increase in, in light burning ages, we are fully staffed this summer, which is amazing. Um, so we're not capped now by the fact that we don't have staff to teach swim lessons, we just don't have enough pool space to add more swim lessons. So, uh, so we're starting a little bit with that, but it's a nice problem to have over the, over the issues we had. So, even, um, you know, this summer, we're going to, we're, I'd be open on Sundays now, um, we have one night where we're going to stay open a little bit later, and we've added in some more additional programming too. So, we're, we're pretty excited for this summer coming up.
Good to hear, it's been a few years.
Yes, it has.
Any objections, anything?
No.
All right. Then, that gets us to the end of our discussion, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
One quick comment, next, uh, meeting would normally be June fourth, that's primary election, right?
It is. Historically, what do we, what do you say, we've moved it to Monday?
Because of the city elections.
Yeah.
Is that, or, or doesn't that matter? I mean, there's a lot of time, we can vote.
But I believe, Mandy, we've only moved it, but, but we could see elections on that date for.
So, another change?
That is in the council procedural rules, and it.
We, we have, uh, Tuesday is normal.
Okay, good, just a question. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Brandon Ross, Brandon Ross Carlstone, all in favor, please say yes, pros, no, Mandy, please call.
Brandon Ross?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yep.
Dan Strayland?
Yes.
Heum?
Yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.